Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of March 7th, 2019. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be aware that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics -- Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. May I have a roll call, please?
White, Gobbo?
Here.
Peason?
President.
Wagner?
Here.
Hashtag?
Here.
Depp?
Here.
Miniman-Laphony?
Here.
Mayor Delphor?
Here.
Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Serratt? Here. Okay. Don't have any considerations, no meeting minutes, no resolutions. Would it be appropriate just to open up for comments from the floor?
For items, no.
For items, yes, I remember. Okay. So I'd just like to open up the floor for comments that are not on tonight's agenda, if anyone has any. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to applications. First up, I believe we just had, this just came through recently, a request to adjourn the signature detailing application to March 28th without further notice.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you said, this just came to light actually this morning. A question arose regarding one of the conditions, this is a conditional use application, and whether or not that condition can be satisfied.
Uh huh.
I spoke to the applicant's attorneys this morning, and we agreed the best route at this point would be to request an adjournment until March 28th as a placeholder without further notice, so we can do a little more research and then decide which is the proper course for this application to go forth.
Okay.
So it would be requesting an adjournment and also providing an extension on the time of decision to May 31st.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant the extension? An adjournment?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Gobbo?
Yes.
Peason?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Hashtag?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Miniman-Laphony?
Yes.
Mayor Delphor?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Serratt?
Yes. Next up, we have MAC Development Group.
Mr. President.
You want?
There's been a request from Pearson Properties to go first because they believe they're shorter in nature and they will be in and out quickly, which means Mr. Ford gets no more than two minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grady. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grady &amp; Fisher. I'm here on behalf of our, of the applicant, Pearson Properties LLC. With me tonight, I have our professional engineer, Mike Ford. We also have representatives from Pearson Properties, as well as Stavola Asphalt Companies, to answer any questions if there, if any arises. This is an application for an amended minor site plan to demolish the existing residential structure along Valley Road that was originally approved a few years ago to operate as the office for this site. The applicant feels that they don't need the office for this site, and to expand three storage bins, 50 by 50-foot bins, for aggregate, generally stone. The subject property is located at 340 Valley Road and is located in the general GI industrial zone. It's just over 12 acres, and it's improved, historically it was a concrete facility, it's improved with an existing asphalt manufacturing plant that was approved several years ago by this board with associated production equipment and material storage, including different grades of stone aggregate and the existing structure along Valley Road. The demolition of the residential structure due to its, we don't need, the applicant doesn't need to use that for office, would increase the front yard setback from 38.5 to 215.5 feet, and there would be a net increase of impervious from 45.3% to 46.1%, less than 1%, which is again allowed under the GI industrial zone district. And unless there are any questions, I would ask Mr. Ford to be sworn in to just go over the technicals of the demolition of that building and to address any comments submitted from Engineering, Planning, and the Environmental Commission.
Okay. I assume no one has any questions regarding Mr. Ford's credentials and qualifications?
I think we're good.
I was waiting for the mayor to torture him and say, "No." Thank you.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey still. And I don't see it coming up on the screen yet. Is it?
Button there, push.
No signal.
Uh-oh, technology issues.
Worked last night. Yeah, last night there was a problem, there was a button on your laptop that had to be pulled.
That's good.
It's probably an F8 or an F7 change.
Sounds like we have an IT guy. I just tried functioning.
Mr. Chairman, obviously we're trying a new procedure here, and we trusted that the folks who brought in their equipment would know how to use it.
Yeah. I think I have about 30 seconds left of the two minutes, right?
Well, let's move on.
Yeah, I have the boards.
We can go back old school.
The site plan is submitted, and I'm not going to bother with the other exhibits because this really gets right to the core of the application. And as you can see, the, virtually the entire board is white, except for the colorized versions which are, or elements which are the subject of the application, which are simply the removal of the existing residence along Valley Road, which is a non-complying existing structure in the GI zone. But as was stated at the introduction, what was part of the prior approval was the conversion of that existing residence, single-family residence, to an office. And the operators of the asphalt plant have determined that it's really not necessary to have that office space onsite here. The way they take orders and implement deliveries of asphalt can be done from other office locations that the operator of the plant has, and that would basically remove all the structures between a sound wall that was constructed along Valley Road into the site as part of the prior approval, and then the existing driveway, which is really the only opening other than the access driveway to the asphalt plant. Once that driveway is removed, that would be filled in with additional plantings to supplement and continue that row of plantings that have already been put in place along Valley Road that were part of the prior approval. So that's one element. The other element of the project is behind the sound wall, and this would be something that wouldn't be visual, you know, visual from Valley Road, would be a minor expansion of the onsite material storage area. And that's a gravel base, and we're talking about storage of materials which are aggregate and other products that are used as part of the raw materials for the asphalt production. In essence, that's the, the subject of the application. It's a minor site plan initially because it was a conversion from the Phillips Concrete Plant to the new asphalt plant. And we were actually here once, like, I think, in June of 2017 for amendment to the prior approval for the installation of the sound wall. The staff, as abundance of caution, sent us back here, so you saw us the second time, and this is our third time, for this minor revision for the removal of the residence and the minor expansion of the storage area. We've received two memorandums, actually three, I think. There was an Environmental Commission report dated March 6th, which highlights what was discussed at the Environmental Commission visit that we made there in February. And then there are two reports, one from Mr. Maskey dated February 21st, and a report from T&amp;M Associates dated February 22nd. And we would agree, as any condition of approval, to comply with all the requirements or any plan changes in those two, the planner and engineers' report to their satisfaction.
Okay, thank you. David, do you have any comments?
Yeah. So you're agreeing, I'm referring to my memo of February 21st, the points that were listed regarding outdoor storage, you're going to comply with those?
Correct.
Now, I listed a few questions there. Could you answer them, please, under general comments? First one regarding, this was originally meant for the offices, where would the offices be now?
They're at, the, the operators of the asphalt plant have other facilities, and they take orders through that regional office.
So there'd be no office here?
Correct.
Okay. Was it initially a door and a pathway through the wall, a door through the wall, is that all coming out?
Well, the door is in the wall because the wall was installed, but the pathway would no longer be necessary because there'd be no need to have a pathway from the back to the front where the office would have been.
Okay, and will there be any new lighting on the storage bins?
No new lighting is proposed as part of this application.
Okay.
Then stormwater runoff.
Stormwater.
We, the, the area in the front where the existing residence is would be reverted to natural, you know, lawn or grass and left in a natural state, so we'd remove impervious coverage there. And that's what portion of the property that drains toward Valley Road. And then the storage bin runoff runs into the site and toward the site would have no adverse impact on any neighbors.
Okay, and actually going back to the top of the page, at least in our package, we didn't have any details related to the construction of the storage bins, what they're made out of, how tight, how tall they are?
Right.
Any, any additional lighting, any of those kind of details? Can you explain that?
Yeah, we can provide some additional details on the revised plans, but what we would envision is, if you've seen the site now, it, when Phillips Concrete Plant operated the site, anytime they came back with a truck with a little extra concrete, they made these, I'll call them like Lego blocks, but, you know, gigantic-sized concrete blocks that are stacked throughout the site. So the, and they're already there to delineate portions of the site and storage bins that are there now, and they would be used to delineate these storage bins. They're stacked two, three high, and they're, there actually was a detail for these concrete blocks on the prior approved site plans. We would just, you know, use that same detail.
Okay. All right? Okay. Okay, perfect. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point something out that we discussed at the Environmental Commission the other night, which was, last time we saw the applicant and approved the application, one of the big issues with the discussion in the community was the noise testing. So because there's been no operation of the facility, there's been no noise testing, so that'll carry on in terms of the resolution, and, you know, whenever the operation starts, we'll do some noise testing to make sure that they, the standards are compliant, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, yeah. All of the other prior approval conditions continue, including the, you know, noise test at night, which is a different standard than during the day. Once the plant is up and operational and turned on and can have that, you know, accurate noise test done while the facility's in operation. That was a part of the prior approval.
What's the timeline for operations?
The plant, equipment is all in and ready to run. The current facility operator is using other facilities to deliver asphalt, but they, I think, expect within the next month or so to start operation at this facility, once the weather gets better, I would say, during the day, and then proceed with the night light test, or night noise test.
So the next two, three months?
Right.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And they do have a temporary certificate of occupancy now, and the permanent certificate of occupancy would be issued once the noise test at night is done.
Is there any expiration to that? Time's out right now?
Just, Mike, I know they're taking the residence down for the office, but I'm assuming within the plant, there's an area for the employees to go in and, you know, and then...
Yes, oh, yeah, 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 like the, the operators of the plant, there's, you know, parking spaces, even a handicap parking space, offices that were there, part of the asphalt plant that have been rehabilitated and continue to be used for the asphalt plant. Yes.
Any additional questions? Okay, and we'll open it up to the public, if anyone would like to question. Come on up, Susan.
I have one question. At the Environmental Commission meeting, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Ford said they would be closing the well and septic that were associated with the house?
Yes.
Okay. Even though you might not need potable water on this site, wouldn't it be advantageous to at least have a water source in keeping the well? I mean, I don't even know if there's hydrants in that area or not.
There is public water in Valley Road. Take the microphone. Sorry. Yeah, there is, there is public water in Valley Road, and as part of decommissioning the demo in the House, we're required to close that septic and well in accordance with the Health Department standards.
Oh, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure what there was over there. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience that would like to question or witness? Okay, seeing none.
Nothing further. Thank you for your time and consideration in this application.
Okay. So now it would be, look for a motion to...
A motion to approve, file number 18 PB13 SD Block 11, Block 151.09, Lot 220, 30 on 340 Valley Road, granting amended minor site plan approval to demolish an existing dwelling office structure and expansion of the onsite material stockpile storage area on property located in the GI General Industrial District, with the applicant agreeing to all the conditions and comments made by the board engineer, the board planner, and the Environmental Commission and all the applicable officials, as well as continuing all conditions from the previous approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gobbo?
Yes.
Peason?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Hashtag?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Miniman-Laphony?
Yes.
Mayor Delphor?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Serratt?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Just saying, just saying. Transportation.
Counselman?
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, you may begin.
My name is David Singer. I'm attorney at Vella Singer &amp; Associates, and I'm here representing MAC Development on tonight's application. This is Block 204.04, Lot 25, which is in the residential zone, more commonly known as 519 Hillsborough Road. The property is currently being used for residential purposes and has a existing residential structure on 14.15 acres of land. What MAC Development is proposing is to subdivide Lot 25 into nine lots, seven of which would be new building lots for residential homes to be built on approximate one-acre lots. The existing residential structure would remain on approximately 3.2 acres, and the ninth lot would be solely used as a detention basin. It would also be an extension of Shelburne Road, which, which would sort of dead ends on this lot, and as part of this application. The, I have, I'm gonna have a few experts tonight. If the board would like, we could have them sworn in, or I could get them accredited all together. It's up to the board.
Yeah, and we'll do it one at a time.
So, first would be Debbie D'Amico. She is a licensed engineer, so I'd like to...
Debbie D'Amico?
Okay, I get the mic. Sorry.
Deborah D'Amico, D'Amico Engineering, capital V apostrophe, capital A-M-I-C-O. I'm a licensed PE.
You're right, that's why you put that as approved, all through the other...
I do. I'm a licensed PE in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing, and I've been before this board before.
Okay, unless there's any objections, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. How are we doing?
It's in lot, it's there. Right, right, didn't work.
You have your board?
No, I don't.
All right, so we'll put the boards up on the shelf.
The subdivision is located... I'm sorry. The subdivision is located near, near the intersection of Woods Road and Hillsborough Road, between Shelburne Place and Woods Road, known as Lot 25 in Block 204.04.
Are we marking this exhibit?
We'll mark it as Exhibit 1.
The lot, the lot is mostly wooded. It currently, it contains 14.157 acres. There is one single-family home on the southwest portion of the site.
All right.
We're up on one screen.
This is A1. It's A1? All the pages are gonna be A1, or each page?
Well, they're looking at to mark each exhibit.
Right, but I don't know if the package is gonna be considered one, or each page?
Each page.
So this would be, because I thought this was A1.
That's A1. This is A1.
Yeah. So, page 2 will be A2?
This is A2.
Move and mark them all. A2 would be existing conditions and removal plan, Sheet 2 of 11. A3 would be the lot layout plan, Sheet 3 of 11. Sheet, A4 would be the grading plan, Sheet 4 of 11. Exhibit A5 would be the utility plan, Sheet 5 of 11. Sheet 6, Exhibit 6, A6 would be Sheet 6 of 11, the plan and profile. Exhibit A7 would be the landscape plan, Sheet 7 of 11. I don't think we need, if we need the others, we'll mark them.
Okay.
So looking at the existing conditions and removal plan, you'll see that the lot is, contains 14.17, 1570 acres, and it is mostly wooded. There is one single-family home located on the southwest portion of the lot, and it fronts on Hillsborough Road. Looking at Exhibit 83, the lot layout plan, we're proposing to subdivide the lot into seven additional, new buildable lots, and existing, a lot for the existing home and a separate lot for stormwater management. All of the lots are conforming to the zone. See, my kid taught me well. And looking at the zoning schedule, you see, all the lots are, are in excess of one acre, which is the zone required. They all have adequate frontage, yard, front yard, side yard, rear yard, and lot coverage. And the houses, when they're built, they will conform with the building height requirements. All the lots will be serviced by an extension of Shelburne Place, which will end in a cul-de-sac. And the infiltration base, the detention basin will, is shown to be on Lot 25J at the northwestern portion, part of the lot. So I'm looking at the grading plan, which is Exhibit A4, Sheet 4 of 11, and it shows that the, it shows the existing and proposed, existing and proposed topography of the lot... Exhibit A5 would be the utility plan, Sheet 5 of 11. Sheet 6 -- Exhibit 6 -- A6 would be Sheet 6 of 11, the plan and profile. Exhibit A7 would be the landscape plan, Sheet 7 of 11. I don't think we need -- if we need the others, we'll mark them.
Okay.
So looking at the existing conditions and removal plan, you'll see that the lot is -- contains 14.17 -- 1570 acres, and it is mostly wooded. There is one single-family home located on the southwest portion of the lot, and it fronts on Hillsborough Road. Looking at Exhibit A3, the lot layout plan, we're proposing to subdivide the lot into seven additional -- new buildable lots, and existing -- a lot for the existing home and a separate lot for stormwater management. All of the lots are conforming to the zone. See, my kid taught me well. And looking at the zoning schedule, you see all the lots are in excess of one acre, which is the zone required. They all have adequate frontage, front yard, side yard, rear yard, and lot coverage. And the houses, when they're built, they will conform with the building height requirements. All the lots will be serviced by an extension of Shelburne Place, which will end in a cul-de-sac. And the infiltration base -- the detention basin will -- is shown to be on Lot 25J at the northwestern portion -- part of the lot. So I'm looking at the grading plan, which is Exhibit A4, Sheet 4 of 11. And it shows that the -- it shows the existing and proposed -- existing and proposed topography of the lot. The lot is fairly flat. Some have gotten the wrong -- who are we? Fairly flat, and it drains -- the lots that are fronting on the cul-de-sac drain to the northwest towards the stormwater management basin. There is a high point that separates along the -- roughly along the lot line between Lot 25B, which is the existing home, and Lots 25D and C. There's a high point roughly along that lot line. So the water on Lot 25B flows towards Hillsborough Road. And then the runoff for Lot 25A, which fronts on Woods Road, you'll see flows towards Woods Road. There's a -- and there's a high point or a ridge along the rear of the property lines. And you'll see it right here along roughly the rear setback line. There's a ridge that runs there. So the water splits for the existing homes on Woods Road and goes towards Woods Road for the proposed homes, and it goes up towards the cul-de-sac. There's also a little bit of a berm. You'll see right here, there's an elevation 120 contour that comes along here. And then there's -- it continues out here. So this stormwater is contained really within this part of the site, which is a lot of the reason why I designed the layout the way it is. I wanted to mimic existing conditions as best I could, and I wanted to continue to hold the same drainage pattern. There will be a high point in the road at approximately Station 150. And that will split the flow. Most of the flow will go down towards the cul-de-sac. We picked up in a low point at approximately Station 4 plus 50, and that will dump into the infiltration basin. What is not shown on these plans, but in talking with Mr. Euro, I will be introducing two additional catch basins to pick up any runoff that comes down from the high point and take that to the detention basin as well. So all of the runoff from this portion of the site should be captured and taken to the infiltration basin -- to the stormwater management basin. For proposed Lot 25A, because that is significantly lower than -- and the water couldn't get over there, we will introduce dry well for that to control the stormwater on that lot. So looking at the utility plan, Sheet 5 of 11, Exhibit A5, shows that there's going to be an extension of the sanitary sewer, and that will flow towards existing Shelburne Place. And there will be a couple of manholes, and then the stormwater collection system, which would be the two inlets down here on the low end. And we will also introduce inlets up at the property line to collect water there. The subdivision will be serviced with public water as well, and there's a fire hydrant on Shelburne Place. Let me see if I can find -- oops, I'm sorry. There's an existing fire hydrant right here at this lot line, and then we will extend the water line down. We're proposing a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac. Plan and profile. You see the -- here's the high point at elevation at Station 1 plus 37, just as I described, and then the low point where we have the inlets. And again, we will introduce inlets at the property line at Station 0 plus 00 and take that towards the detention basin. Next sheet is the landscaping plan, and -- oops, where'd it go? It scrolled too fast. The landscaping plan. This lot is significantly treed. Again, I was trying to preserve as much of the trees as we could. So we concentrated the development into this portion of the site with the extension from Shelburne Place. And we located all the trees by survey within 200 feet of the center line, which is approximately the limit of disturbance, give or take, for the subdivision, plus all the trees in the detention basin. To continue to survey all the trees on the lot that were not disturbing, this whole area here and this whole area here, would cost tens of thousands of dollars. So we did not locate all those trees. So we -- so in -- to approximate the number of trees or the percentage of trees that we're removing, if you assume that the entire lot is treed, we're disturbing 34% of the lot. So we're taking approximately 34% of the trees down, assuming all the lot is treed. So we will need a variance for tree removal. We are introducing trees everywhere that the canopy is missing and along the edge of the area of disturbance. And anywhere we could preserve trees, we did, within the development itself. We're also introducing street trees. There was one comment from the engineer to change the -- to add some variety, and we were willing to add some variety to the planting schedule. So that's the bulk of the application and the -- all the big engineering points.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Mr. Singer, is it my understanding that your engineer has just indicated that your client is seeking a variance on trees?
That is correct.
Are you aware of the notice you put out for tonight's hearing?
Yes, which said they were not anticipated. We did not say that there were none. Based upon --
Did we anticipate them at the time the notice went out?
We did not.
When did we determine that there was going to be need for a variance for trees?
Upon our -- after the revised plans were being done and in review of Mr. Maskey's letter, and our engineer did the calculations, and we believe that a variance would be needed.
And when did that occur?
Last week, our engineer determined, based upon the tree calculations, that we would need a variance.
Did you advise the township professionals of such?
It was part of Mr. Maskey's letter, so we would address it as we addressed his letter.
So in the absence of Mr. Maskey's letter, you didn't know whether or not you needed a variance for trees?
Originally, we did not.
Just, yeah, for the record, the tree mitigation ordinance is actually quite clear, and this isn't the first time we've run into this issue, though, with applications. They come in and they get it wrong. Put the onus on where it belongs, but I would think most applicants, engineers, should be able to get the tree mitigation calculations correct, and they would know ahead of time. We can't tell them if they need a variance, because we're not going out and counting the trees.
Is it a hardship waiver? That's what you're asking?
Yes. Well, no, there's a couple of levels here. There's both waivers and variances in the tree mitigation ordinance. The ordinance says you should not remove more than 20% of the trees outside of the area of disturbance. That's a variance. There's a hardship waiver if the tree replacements is so high that it would exceed 1 and 1/2% of the total cost of the project. That's a waiver. That's a hardship waiver. But the variance has to do with exceeding the 20% requirement.
Right, so I was asking, which one is it, then?
Variance.
It's both.
We believe it would be -- we believe it would be both? Both?
I'll read it to you. The ordinance states that trees should only be removed from the critical footprint, which is basically the house and some space beyond it, and that the removal of trees outside of the footprint needs a waiver. In addition, no more than 20% of all the count of trees on a residential zone lot shall be removed even with mitigation measures. Deviation from the 20% requirement requires a variance. So we know it's a variance according to the testimony we just heard. It's also a waiver because they're removing trees outside of the footprint, the critical footprint.
So the tree mitigation calculated, that was just recalculated about a week ago?
Yes.
Because we have a memo. I had attended the Environmental Commission meeting November 20th, and I had agreed to do a tree mitigation calculation. So we sat on that for about three months.
And the memo from Mr. Maskey is also dated same date.
Sir, where does a variance with no notice leave us?
Yeah.
Well, funny you should ask.
I thought I would.
I think what the board can consider doing is allowing for the testimony of the various professionals to be made, but frankly, it's going to have to be re-noticed for the variance request prior to the board taking a formal action one way or the other on this application. I think that's a reasonable compromise in the situation. The alternative is to tell the applicant to go back out again and re-notice the hearing with the request for whatever variances it needs, and then come back and give the testimony. I think the way we're proposing is more reasonable, and also if there happen to be any other variances that should pop up -- that's the legal term -- during the course of the testimony. Those can also be noticed prior to a decision. It would also allow anyone who wishes to object to the application to have the appropriate opportunity to know exactly what they're objecting to.
So I think in fairness, it's to go forward, you know, with testimony, because I'm assuming there's a lot of residents here, and I don't think it's fair for them to have to come back second night to question --
Probably have to.
Well, they probably will, but they'll have an opportunity to question professionals tonight. So I think I'd like to go forward with the testimony, knowing that we will not be rendering a decision tonight.
And that the applicant will have to re-notice the application with the appropriate variances and where necessary waivers in the notice, so that a final decision on this application will be done appropriately inconsistent with the municipal land use law.
Do we need to take a motion to continue, or?
Well, you can motion open to the public if that's on the -- unless the board has questions for the engineer.
Okay, I'll open it for the board.
Mr. Chair, I have some other questions before we open it.
Yeah, no.
Do you have an environmental consultant, or are we going to work through these wetlands issues with Mr. D'Amico, or?
Yes, and we can provide testimony. We did meet with Mr. Euro and went over the stormwater items that were raised.
Okay, but I was talking about the wetland issues.
In terms of --
In terms of dating back to the Environmental Commission's December 5, 2018 letter, we're -- there's wetlands on the adjacent property, but the basins are beneath the level of the wetlands, so we were concerned that it was going to be draining the wetlands. So I guess I'm asking if, yeah, Mr. D'Amico wants to address that, or do you have somebody else to?
That's part of the reason why I didn't get around to the tree mitigation, is because I was busy. I re-graded the basin and reran all the counts. And if you look, the bottom of the basin is significantly higher than it was a few months ago to address that, so that we're above the wetlands and we're not draining -- there wouldn't be any opportunity for the wetlands to drain back into our basin. In doing that, we raised the road, raised everything up, so that we could get the water to flow that way. So that has been addressed. The other thing that came up at the Environmental Commission is that there was -- even though there's an LOI that has -- that states there is no wetlands nor transition area on the site, there is, and if you look at the grading plan, there's a wetland on the adjacent site.
Right.
And the transition area should come around, but DEP says there's no transition area on our site. So I did regrade the basin to allow for that transition area to go undisturbed. I do need to tweak the basin a little bit more in my discussion with Mr. Euro, but we will continue to provide that buffer transition area for the wetlands on the adjacent property. So we did address both those issues with regard to wetland.
So there was no -- there was no issues with DEP? I mean, you didn't go out and get another LOI, you just kind of addressed the fact that because they said there wasn't a transition area, you regraded the basin to at least -- at least be equal in terms of the water level. So we're not going through a formal process with DEP, but you kind of informally took care of the situation.
Right, correct. So I addressed all of that. Again, according to our LOI, and we're allowed to rely on that, there is no transition area or wetland on site. But again, we're mitigating that as best we can.
Okay. I'm sorry. Did you -- Town Engineer, did you look at that, or?
Yeah, I did, and I had this discussion with Mr. D'Amico. Even though the LOI --
Mike, sorry.
I'm sorry. Even though the LOI presence, absence indicates that there is no wetlands or buffers on the property in question, in fact, when there is an adjacent wetland, you still have to take into account that 50-foot buffer
Right.
onto our property, which Mr. D'Amico did do. She did regrade the basin.
Okay.
I think she needs to provide further testimony as to the revised drainage conditions. The original application called for an infiltration basin, which was a major concern --
Right.
-- the Environmental Commission and other professionals. It has since been regraded to be more of a formal detention basin, and I think some testimony regarding those changes need to be presented, so that the board understands exactly the changes that were made.
And you're okay with that, then?
I'm okay with the concept. There is some work that still needs to be done to fine-tune some of the grading around the perimeter of the basin, but in general, the calculations are acceptable, and she just needs to really pull the whole package together as one, so we can do a formal complete review of it.
Okay, thank you.
And again, my intermediary resubmission was to address those concerns that would have put the subdivision beyond approval or raised serious questions. I wanted to make sure that we, you know, hit all of those before we went further, before we came before this body. And I wanted to leave enough that I can adjust, should we need to adjust after this hearing.
Just with this infiltration basin, and then you said you're now getting closer to a standard detention basin. So part of the infiltration basin is that you have a maintenance plan, but -- and quite honestly, I've -- I know the perk of this area, and I'm not a big fan of these infiltration basins, but if that's what the DEP wants nowadays, it's for -- basins, but if that's what the DEP wants nowadays for stormwater management, but my experience is that these clog quite frequently even before the project is completed. So can you address how this is going to be maintained and preserved during the construction and also afterwards if it is truly an infiltration basin?
Sure. The basin will be excavated and there will be more than six inches of sand put in because we need to get down to the permeable layer, which is not the uppermost layer. So there'll be significant excavation and sand put in. Typical infiltration basins have six inches of sand. We will probably have a couple of feet or more. We were finding permeability down 60 inches, so it's going to be significant amount of sand. So that will give a lot of, a lot more safety, factor of safety in that. The sand will hold water itself to allow it to get into the rock layer, the permeable layer below. In addition, we've, the basin's only a foot, foot and a half, two feet deep. Again, we have to look at the perimeter a little bit and give a little bit more free board on top. So it's very shallow. It's really mimics a wetland without planting, if you would. So it's very shallow and it's, the water quality storm is what infiltrates. Above the water quality storm, we have a broad crest weir at elevation 114.6, and so it's only a seven-foot weir and it's just where the water would flow over the berm and into the wetlands. And again, that would be a very gentle and subtle flow. It's a very natural basin, so there's no, there's no hardware to keep in, you know, to maintain. You have to maintain the weir, make sure it doesn't overgrow or, you know, get filled with debris, you know, branches that catch on it, and then make sure that the sand continues to function correctly. One of the best things about this basin is that it's an at-grade basin. The Shellburn Place extension has a subsurface infiltration basin. And so if that one ever failed, you wouldn't know it. This one, you will see that it's, that there's something wrong with it because it's there. The residents will know it and the HOA can enact.
So, so there is going to be an HOA maintenance fee that the seven residents would be to maintain and inspect? I guess there's an inspection required to make sure that it's working properly on an annual or whatever basis to, is there any kind of ordinance requirement for that, David?
Yeah, I believe they require now an annual assessment of all the basins in the township.
And is there any sort of filter fabric placed between the sand and the top soils to prevent any kind of filling of the perk and that kind of thing and the engineering of the basin?
Yeah, that will, that is provided, the sand is encapsulated underneath by a filter fabric.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I don't recall hearing the answer to the second part of the committee's question, which is who is going to maintain the basin? Is there going to be a homeowners association?
Yes, there will be a homeowners association.
Formal one with the formal documents and everybody will be notified accordingly?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Is there a specific reason or reasons why the design extends out past the existing cul-de-sac as opposed to a road straight in from Hillsborough Road? Or is that not, would it not be possible?
There was, there were previous concepts to this that included clustering done by another firm, and we looked at all of those and we wanted to preserve a big swath of trees. And by coming in from Hillsborough Road, we would have had to disturb all of that. The other thing is we wanted to give a large lot to the existing, the existing property owner is going to keep that existing home in that lot, and they wanted a sizable lot. Coming in off of Hillsborough Road would have cut that right in half.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
David, Dan?
Yeah, a couple of things. This gets also to, well, I'll pick up on the comment just made about why it's coming in from Shellburn. I think myself and Mr. Euro as well asked the question about how are you going to treat the existing Shellburn cul-de-sac bowl? Is it going to be straightened out? Is it going to be deeded over to the adjoining property owner? Is the sidewalk going to be continued? We would prefer that the existing cul-de-sac not remain there, that it be straightened out.
Yeah, I believe that that parts, the township committee would need to make the decision on the existing cul-de-sac. It's part of township right away. So if the township committee wants that road straightened out.
Are you sure it's public, it's not private?
That is public.
Okay.
That is public.
Okay, there's going to be some follow-up on that. I had another question or comment in my report, and this gets back somewhat to the issue of what any other variances or waivers you might need. It's the calculation of density. It's on page two of my November 20th memo. The district, our district, is a density of .85 units per acre, which given the gross acreage would give you 12 units. So you're certainly within that, but there's a footnote on our residential schedule that says you have to proportionally, and it is a list in the ordinance, reduce the acreage by what the critical area calculations, and then you would do your density calculation. So I haven't seen that done anywhere, so you would need to do that calculation to make sure you still meet the density.
There are no critical areas on site. There's no steep slopes, there's no flood plains, there's no wetlands according to our LOI, so there are no critical areas on site.
All right, that answers that. That was it for now.
Robert, any addition?
My main question was answered regarding the vacation of the existing Shellburn Place. So you would have to make a petition to the town council to vacate the cul-de-sac bowl of Shellburn Place.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a follow-up. All the streets, utilities, et cetera, within the subdivision will be privately owned, correct?
Yes. Utilities and you're talking about the utility?
Fire hydrants, roads, sidewalks, everything.
I think that would be, I think if that was going to be a private road, that would, again, I guess the township would have to make.
The township has a policy of not accepting any more streets or fire hydrants or any of the things of that nature, as a chairman is well aware and champions on many occasions. So basically, the township doesn't take back anything anymore. It's all privately owned.
Sure.
And again, you'd have to have the homeowners association in place to maintain everything.
Sure, that's a requirement of the township committee and that's not a problem. I guess our only question would be is if someone needed to turn around like a snowplow or something, how would they go, they'd have to go into the private road to use the cul-de-sac?
Right. There was one request or comment from the fire marshal on this was just that they would need to approve the placement of all the fire hydrants.
They would do that.
Okay.
These homes have basements?
Yes, they will.
Have we done that kind of perk testing to see?
No, we have not, 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 we do that with the plot plans when the homes go to get built.
Mr. Chair, just real quick. Regarding my letter dated February 27, obviously, the way this was drafted was major consulting had done an initial review back in November. The current set of plans were revised to address that review, so my comments, took Mr. White's initial comments and addressed whether the information was provided or not provided, and then I added my own comments to the end of the report. And my question to the applicant engineer, would you concur with all my comments that they'll be addressed, you know, put something on the record if you have any questions or issues or if you're going to agree to everything?
We could go through them. As we discussed, and this is on page 11, you're referring to of your letter dated February 27.
I'm referring to leaving several of the items in Mr. White's initial letter that have not been addressed.
Sure, we could go through them.
I mean, I don't know if we want to go through each individual. I'm not sure what the policies of the board.
Unless the applicant is willing to concur with all the, with all the recommendations or need to go through them for purposes of the record.
The ones they won't comply with.
Or the ones they will, so we'll know which ones they are because in the absence, it takes all the, makes it difficult for the attorney doing the.
Yeah, let's go through one of them. There are some questions that we had on our end for, under section E on page six of your February 27, 2019 letter, specifically number seven. And I'll let our engineer take it over from there.
Yeah, it kind of gets into the weeds of drainage design, but it has to do with how time of concentration is calculated. And the request from Mr. White was that we reduce the sheet flow in the time of concentration in the wooded areas to no more than 25 feet. I could not find that reference in the Soil, Erosion, and Sediment Control, so I'd like to just have a reference on that before. I'm not objecting to doing it, I just would like to know where that is.
We can work, we can work that out. What was the guidance, were we going to go through them all?
Where they won't comply. Or have questions about compliance?
Perhaps we should start from the beginning.
Right.
Section D, there's no, some things are not addressed.
Yeah, well, actually, starting on page three of Mr. Euro's memo, a couple of them have been addressed. You look under A, general comments.
It looks like A6 is the first.
Six, but that's typical, the township engineer will provide the addresses.
Absolutely.
Number seven, we talked about, the applicant shall clarify the homeowners association will be established in accordance with NJSA 4055B43. It sounds like she will be doing that. C, grading, additional spot grades must be provided.
We'll comply.
Took away with that. C4, this comment has not been addressed, maintain a maximum three to one slope.
Yeah, that has.
You'll take care of that?
Yep.
Okay. Additional information must be provided regarding the contour around the infiltration basin. You've done that?
We will.
Okay. C6 has not been addressed, provide the limits of clearing and tree removal. Well, we discussed that. The rest of it has to do on that page with the final plat, it would take care of that at that point in time. E5 has not been addressed. The existing study drainage area map is 6.8 acres. Proposed drainage area is seven acres, so they're looking for more calculations. You'll address that?
Right, yes. And that has to do with the extra inlets and picking up that, that's where the area difference was, just so that the board's comfortable with.
E7 was looking for some additional calculations.
And that's the one I just need the reference for the 25-foot length.
E11 had not been, additional test pit information must be provided. You'll take care of that?
Yep.
E13, this comment has not been addressed, has to do New Jersey Stormwater Management Porch of the property flows towards Woods Road will be improved with a single family dwelling. Without getting too much into that, will you address that comment?
Yes.
Okay. E14, you'll show the location of the dry well and easement. You hadn't done that yet. Is that, you'll take care of that?
Yes. Now, the actual sizing of it in my discussion with Mr. Euro was that we will provide sample calculations and it will be sized to the house at time of plot plan.
Okay.
It's okay, acceptable.
Okay. E15, basin drain time calculations must be submitted.
No problem.
No problem. This is still on E18, with a clarification Mr. White was asking for on the total tract area.
And I will include that in the revised stormwater, the narrative of the stormwater management report.
Okay, and 19, you'll provide additional clarification there as well.
Yep.
And 20 as well, you'll provide additional information. 22, summary of technical information must be provided?
Yes.
Okay. 23, have you addressed that comment yet? Preservation of natural areas shown on the LID BNP must be shown and labeled.
I will in the revised report.
Very good. The HGS will be, this is number 25, will be permanently disturbed and clarification is required on the disturbance?
Yep, all of that clarification will be provided in the narrative.
Okay, 26 was not addressed, you'll address that, the 50% vegetated swell. None of the construction details indicate that the 100% of the proposed inlets will comply with NJD PES and LID BNP. Will you address that?
Yes.
Number 28, he was looking for dimensions of the scour hole.
I'll provide them.
Number 29, you'll have to, he was looking for you to revise the plans to include an easement and deed restriction for review and comment by the township board.
Yes.
For the stormwater. Number 30 is a long one, it says it hasn't been addressed. Operations Maintenance Manual in accordance with the Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual, you'll submit a manual?
Yes.
Number 32 was not addressed, the existing proposed condition drainage area maps need to be revised.
Yes, we'll revise those, yep.
Same with number 33, this is looking for additional details.
Yep.
We're getting there. F, landscape and lighting, no proposed location for the light fixtures, et cetera. This comment has not been addressed.
We will address all of those.
You'll address all those in the landscaping and lighting. There was a few under plant schedule, you'll address all of those as well?
I had a question and Mr. Euro was going to clarify the form specifications for the proposed trees, so once he gives me that, I will compile that.
Okay. I believe that's it in terms of what was not addressed from Mr. White's original memo. Okay.
In terms of your additional comments, if you'd like, we'll go through those as well.
If you would like, I mean, the majority of my comments in section I were pulling everything together as part of the stormwater report, so that's all in one place.
Yep. And there's nothing there that I couldn't compile of?
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay, all right. Any additional from the dais? Okay, I will now open it up to the, do I need to do a motion open to public? Okay. Can I have a motion to open to, for public comment?
So moved, second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if anyone would wish to question the professional, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record and speak very closely to the mic because it doesn't have a lot of range.
Thank you. Lidjue James, 282 Shellburn Place. I actually own the property right at the, on the plans, the north of that pretension basin, or potential one. Had a couple of questions for the engineer about the height.
Can you pick up the mic?
Oh, sorry.
This way, if you want, this way it's easier, just hold the mic in your hand. This way you can.
Thank you. So a couple of questions about the height of that in between my property and that basin?
Okay, I was trying to get to the.
Mr. Miko, can you point out the property he's talking about?
Is this your lot with the pool?
No, on top.
Shellburn.
On Shellburn Place.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Okay. So the detention basin will be behind your home? Here's the detention basin, and your home?
It's right there.
Is at elevation 120?
Okay.
And right now, the top of my berm is about 115, so it's five feet below the grading around your house.
Okay, so the water will?
Come from your house.
Okay.
Towards the wetlands, actually, yeah.
Okay, I know someone from the board mentioned or asked about the wetlands kind of draining in, and it seems like that's why you lowered it. Is there any potential for the opposite to happen if there's a huge storm by any chance and the water comes out? If there's a huge storm by any chance, and the water comes out towards, you know, if it just kind of overflows, or anything of the sort?
Well, it flows naturally, and you see right here where it says 7.3-foot broad crest weir. So that's the overflow for the basin. So, once the basin fills up, which will only be a foot and a half to two feet, it'll flow towards the wetland, which is the way it goes now. Right now, this is very flat in here, and it, the water comes and it kind of slows down, although it doesn't, there's no low point and no way to hold it, but it kind of slows down and makes its way to the wetlands. The detention basin is a little bit higher, and it will hold the water. Most of it, for the smaller storms, will infiltrate into the ground.
Yep.
And for the larger storms, it will continue where it goes naturally, and that would be into the wetlands.
Okay.
And we don't want to dry up the wetlands, we want to keep them wet.
No worries there, thank you.
We were kind of like, we had some concerns, because you want to maintain that, the permeability of the wetlands itself.
Yes.
So, before, we were kind of draining it out, and we felt that, you know, that could be potentially a problem, in terms of doing what it's supposed to do.
Yeah.
So, but I understand your question, but it's good to have that balance, if you can.
Okay, no, it makes total sense, as long as it's being planned for, right? Appreciate it. Another note, again, thanks for the board for bringing up the aspect of the cul-de-sac and what's going to happen potentially with that. I was able to talk to the rest of the homeowners on just part of the Shelburne place that was developed, and we all agree on the same thing, we would love that to be straightened out, as opposed to keeping kind of the edge of the cul-de-sac to another one. So, if anything can be done there, and I think that's what we're leaning towards, that would be ideal as well, I appreciate it.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, the little bubble that's there on the existing Shelburne, the residents on Shelburne would like that eliminated?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we could get that in writing if needed. Right now, we have a verbally agreed.
I think we probably want to talk to the rest, but, not that, but, just to get everyone's sense of where that is, but.
Of course.
If that's the general consensus, I don't see where that would be a problem.
Okay, excellent. I think that's all I had, I appreciate your time as well, thank you guys.
Anyone else would like to question a witness? Here you go. Run to the mic.
Starting Q.
John Levinsky, 523 Hillsborough Road. What I want to know is where?
Can you spell your last name just for the record?
L-E-V-I-N-S-K-I.
Thank you.
I'm on the corner, if you want to bring it up, on the corner of Hillsborough, Woods. Where is the sewer system going to be coming to that new lot on Woods Road?
There is a sanitary sewer manhole at the intersection of Woods Road and.
Elite.
Yeah, and, so there is a manhole there. We're not at this time showing an extension down, rather that the lateral will be extended up towards, because there's only one single-family home. But if the, if the sewer MUA wants us to extend it down, we're willing to do a sewer extension down to the lot to pick it up.
Okay, so you're going up to Hillsborough Road?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, all right, that's all I wanted to know. The MUA makes that decision?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hi, Diane Stanton, 10 Grafton Court, Lot 9 on Grafton Court, if you're looking at that map. This is, I have a couple of questions. First of all, Ms. D'Amico, you said that there was some sort of burn on, which would be on, my lot is a five-sided lot on that cul-de-sac. I don't know what you're talking about, a burn. There are, on that one side, there are stones that we put there, actually, to get rid of poison ivy, and it goes on an angle. And the rest of our lot is way below the level of where those lots are going to be. We are the original owners, we've lived there for 40 years. I can tell you that our lot gets a lot of water from there.
This is your lot here, Lot 9?
Lot 9, yes.
Okay, so.
So that, you were talking about the.
The aerial topography from the survey company shows that your lot is at elevation 120. The existing elevation of our lot, you see right here this number, is 117. So, we are three feet lower than your lot.
I, when was this done? I mean, they can come and walk the lot, everybody can come.
It was done, I'd have to pull the map, but yeah, it was, it's fairly recent.
I'm, I'm just saying, our lot is way lower than what those lots are. My other question was about the planting. When you were talking about the tree removal around those lots, I had seen all of those tags on several of the trees, blue ones and red ones, I believe. So are, is it my understanding, after seeing your presentation here, is it my understanding that the trees that are, the deciduous trees that are near my line will still be there?
Yes, the tags on the tree were locations, so that the, when the surveyors were out, they knew from day to day which trees they had already located, so that they're not locating the same tree.
Okay.
So they're not tags to be removed.
Okay.
They were just tags that ribbons put up, so that they knew that they had already located those trees. And if you look here on the graving plan that's up, see this dotted line?
Yes.
That is the limit of disturbance. So all of these trees on the outside are going to remain.
Okay.
So, I need to regrade the basin, so this line might shift a little bit, but my intent here is to leave this triangle of trees.
Okay. Now, since you did all that tagging, there have been a lot of trees that have come down in that lot. I don't know if you're aware of that. I mean, so, will they be removed?
The trees that have come down, that are within the limit of disturbance, will be removed, but if they're outside of the limit of disturbance, unless it's a hazard, they'll probably remain. Again, it's, that's an environmental, it provides, you know, areas for the critters to hide and roost area, and to play, and so. We like to leave them, if we can, if they're, certainly if they're a hazard, they'll be.
Had the builder thought about doing, like, for those properties there, doing any sort of evergreen type of planting?
That was one of the.
Along the lines there?
That was one of the comments, was to, all of the proposed trees that are currently there, that I'm proposing, are deciduous.
Yes.
Because the existing canopy there is predominantly cedars, which is, so I wanted to introduce some variety. But one of the comments that came back was to add some, some more evergreens, so we will be adding evergreen into the mix.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Susan.
Are there any further questions?
Yes, do we have one more? Susan's making her way.
All right.
Susan Golliford, Hunt Club Road. I want to follow up on Ms. Stanton's question about those trees behind her property. You said you were trying to leave them in that triangle. That's part of that lot, correct?
That's part of the, the subject lot, yes.
Is there going to be a conservation easement to prevent the new owners from cutting the trees down?
We're not proposing any at this time. Now, the people who would buy these lots, because they are so heavily wooded and we're leaving so much of them, a person who wants a lawned lot isn't going to be looking at this, that's not what they're going to be looking for. They're not going to be interested in a lot that is so heavily treed. So we're relying on that. We certainly don't want to introduce conservation easements all over, but we could, we could, we could entertain that if that's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, so the answer is, there's nothing that would stop the new homeowners from cutting down the trees behind the stones?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments? Any other comments from the floor? Okay. Close, do I have to do a?
Unless it's the only witness. Is the only witness?
Not that worry, do we have?
I'd ask the board, we do have our engineer here who prepared, the company who prepared the EIS and the CIS. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to present him. We also have the engineer who did the traffic impact study, so he is available as well if the board has questions of that engineer.
Okay. I will do the traffic first, because I would figure the residents, I would be interested in hearing that.
Sure.
Douglas Polyniak, P-O-L-Y-N-I-A-K. And just for the record, qualifications.
Sure, I'm a graduate of Lehigh University, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I received that degree in 1998. Since that, since that time, I've been working in the traffic engineering field. I've been licensed for approximately the last 14 years. I work for Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, I've testified before somewhere around 90 municipal planning and zoning boards within the state of New Jersey. I have not been before Hillsborough yet.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any objections, we will accept qualifications.
Thank you.
Would you like to please go over your traffic impact assessment that you conducted?
Sure. We put together a, a pretty limited traffic impact assessment for this project, as, you know, from a traffic engineering perspective, seven new homes generally doesn't generate that much traffic that would cause any kind of impacts on any of the surrounding roadway network. So, what we did is we, we looked at the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, to project the volumes associated with the homes. And it's approximately 10 peak hour trips in the morning peak hour, and approximately eight in the evening peak hour. That's a combination of inbound trips, coming home, as well as leaving. Obviously, it's predominantly leaving in the morning and coming home in the evening. It equates to somewhere about, with about 10 trips, you know, one trip entering or exiting the cul-de-sac every six minutes, so it's a very low volume of traffic. It's not anticipated that these homes would have any, any perceptible impact on the roadway network. We also reviewed the roadway with respect to RSIS, and it meets the qualifications as far as cartway width, sidewalk, and bulb dimension. So, you know, based on our review, it also meets RSIS qualifications. And that was pretty much the extent of the statement that we put together.
Okay.
Acceptable tonight.
Okay. David, do you have any?
Nothing.
Okay, anyone from the board? Okay, then I will open up to the floor, anyone would like to question, is witness? Looks like you're finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In a good way. Your next witness.
Mr. Board, like, will bring the witness up for. Spencer, could you introduce yourself to the board?
Certainly, hi. Are we on? My name is Christopher Nussar with Engineering and Land Planning Associates.
Is there any question tonight? All truth about the truth?
I do.
About your last name, please?
I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey in good standing. I am a graduate of Rutgers University in 2006 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I have testified before perhaps not 90 boards, however, quite a number of boards, Bridgewater Township Planning Board, the Raritan Township, Hunter County Planning Board, Land Use Board, those are the ones that are neighboring to you, but certainly well more than 30 boards.
Okay. Seeing any objections, we will accept your qualifications.
Just make sure that mic is on, you tap it, make sure it is, okay. Just keep it close to your mouth.
Are there any specific questions related to either the environmental impact statement or the community impact statement from the board?
From there? Okay, I don't know if there's any from the floor. Looks like you even, oh, wait. Come on. Yep. And I, to the mic.
Tuyan Lee for Ivy Lee. And I just wanted to know if I heard Mr. Maskey clearly. You, you had asked if the sidewalks would continue into the development, and I didn't know, quite understand if that's on the plan.
Yeah, and I might defer to Bob on this, in terms of how they intend to, well, part of it has to do with getting rid of the existing cul-de-sac, and then what to do with the sidewalks after. Bob, you want to?
Yes. If you look at the plan, the applicant is showing a sidewalk along the northernly portion of the, the new cul-de-sac, and it terminates at the, the bulb of the cul-de-sac. They will, if the existing cul-de-sac is removed, they will continue the roadway with new sidewalk. It just appears from my site investigation that there is no sidewalk on the opposite side of the street existing, so there will be no need to continue that sidewalk. So it'll come into the new cul-de-sac, and it'll end down the end.
All right, thank you. There's a school nearby, so I just wanted to, to understand the plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions of any of our professionals regarding the application?
No, I think the silence gave you the answer.
Anyone from the public?
Okay. Any additional comments or questions from the public? One last chance for this evening.
Yeah, for this evening.
For this evening, I, okay. So, we will make a motion to continue.
We are now where we were ostensibly about an hour, ten minutes ago. The applicant is seeking a tree mitigate, a tree, a hardship waiver and a tree mitigation variance. Are there any other variances or waivers you're asking for, Mr. Singer?
No.
Going once, going twice, you sure? Okay. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, it is our recommendation that this matter be continued. There will be a need to renotice for this, because of the need to notice for the variances and the waivers. And then another hearing will have to be conducted to address the variances and the waiver requests by a, by a testimony from the applicant, and by comments, I assume, from the planning director and the board engineer.
David, did you want to offer any potential dates?
How long do you think it's going to take?
I don't think it should take that long. We listed most of the testimony tonight, so if there is additional testimony, it would be.
Well, I would indicate, Counselor, that your engineer's testimony, where she hadn't really done a particularly thorough study of the trees, and that her determination that there was a 34% waiver issue was based upon the fact of a calculation based on how many trees would have to be removed. So I think you might want to look at a slightly more extensive backup for how the determination is being made.
Yeah, the tree calculation needs to be redone overall.
Right. And, and we will do that, and she'll be prepared to testify to that at the next, whenever the meeting is scheduled.
Okay. How long do you gentlemen need for a response?
Oh, for that, it wouldn't be long at all. You. Turn it around real quick. Turn it around real quick.
As I get that, Mr. Maskey, they could also answer all the other questions that were brought up that they would have answers for possibly at that time too for the engineer of all the questions, so that we can just do it all at once. Sure, we'll, we'll continue our communication with Mr. Euro. Okay.
Looking at the calendar, hmm, what are you doing this summer? The next empty date is April 25th. That's actually a business meeting, but we are now in the habit of having applications on business meetings because we are fairly busy. April 4th and April 11th each have a very large application on them, so we kind of wanted to keep those. One is LD Construction on Route 206, the other is Amwell Terrace on Amwell Road. So now, having said that, this shouldn't take that long. We could do the 25th, April 25th, there's nothing on that night right now.
Does that work?
Sure, of course, for us, the sooner the better, but.
All right, well, if there's any cancellations, obviously. It doesn't look like there's going to be.
We are absolutely, the two that Mr. Maskey refers to in April are both.
Yes.
Longstanding applicants related to a litigation.
Right.
Yeah, and we have an obligation to get those done within a relatively timely fashion once they start.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
April 25th.
There will be new notices because of the necessity to notice the waivers and the variance. So in the motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing on this matter till April 25th, 2019, with notice of variances and waivers.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to move to April 25th with three notices.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
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 Okay, so David, anything else?
Yeah, lastly, the next meeting is March 14th. We have two applications and ordinance to review that night.
Okay. And with that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, and also, yes, as, as I was talking about business meetings, the March 28th business meeting is full as well. We have the capital planning presentation that night and we have the, potentially the application that was adjourned or carried tonight and we also have an SGL property site plan, so March 28th, although it's a business meeting, is busy.
Okay.
We busy.
All right.
Yes.
Now, if there's nothing further?
Motion adjourned.
All right, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody. See you next week.